Studio audience, we do have a number of extra seats if you wanted to, well, be careful because the weather is kind of slippery out there. I just wanted to, before we get into our two presentations, I wanted to, you know, recognize our new board member, Mr. McLeod, and give him compliments on having the cleanest driveway in Devoe. There is not a driveway, there were, I went to drop something off, there was not a flake of snow to be found. Clean, pristine. So congratulations, and it's quite impressive.
And you're conscious of your neighbors, so we like that.
On a, on a more serious note, and one, a prayerful note, and I know Mr. Petrosi will end the meeting this way tonight, but I wanted to extend our thoughts and condolences to Mrs. Dunn, whose brother passed away a couple days ago after a long, strong, tough battle. So, Mrs. Dunn, we're thinking about you, and we, we know that you're, you're always with us, but please know that you're on our minds and in our thoughts and prayers. So, God bless you and your brother, and I know Mr. Petrosi will have something to say at the end of the meeting, but you're such a, such an important fixture on our board. We have two presentations this evening, members of the board. The first one that I'm going to introduce right now and have Dr. Haley O. Stewart make the presentation has to do with Head Start. As you know, almost three years ago to the date, we took over the Head Start program in Niagara Falls, and this gave us a chance to start educating our youngest, youngest children. So just to set the stage before her presentation, I want you to know that we spend on children under the age of four about $10 million. How does that happen? We have a universal pre-K grant and a Head Start grant that totals $7 million, and you as board members have contributed $3 million through benefits to service 841, 841 children under the age of four. I think we do early childhood better than any place around. Our pre-K program is really second to none because of our, our staff and our, our directors and our, and our, and our curriculum and, and just the love that goes to our young three and four, four-year-old children. So I'm really proud of the program. I'm proud we can get our young, early learners in here as soon as we possibly can. We will soon be under a federal audit from, for the Head Start program. We haven't been notified. We'll get a 45-day notification letter and we'll have a federal audit. We look forward to that audit. We know we're doing the best we can with our Head Start program. And just one delineation of terms, early, if you hear the word early Head Start, that means one- and two-year-olds. If you hear the word Head Start, that's three- and four-year-olds, aside from our school-wide programs, okay? Just a quick delineation. So, Dr. Haley O. Stewart has been leading us for the last three and a half years in the Head Start program and is part of a regulation under the Department of Health and Human Services. This is a federal program run by the Department of Health and Human Services. We need to make sure that you have the guidance and leadership governance information that you possibly can. This is a 63-page document that we have boiled down to 18 quick slides. We're not looking to gloss them over. We just want to make sure that we are accurately reporting to you, the board, who is ultimately responsible for Head Start, through, through my oversight, that you have the information. So, Doctor, would you please come and lead us through this very smartly and very, very swiftly and make sure you cover just the high points that our, our board needs to know in preparation for any federal audit?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Dunn. Yeah. Thank you very much, Mr. Lori. Thank you to the board and leadership for the opportunity to meet with you.
Tonight, so I'm going to move right on to be timely and efficient, but this is about Head Start leadership and program governance, which is required that we review this with the governance, the governing body, which is you, the board. So, I pulled out one of the regulations that specifically addresses the governing body. All of you know CFR means Central Federal Register, and this is the purpose. So basically, the governing body is one of three different components. We have the governing body, that is you, the Board of Education in this case. We have the Policy Council, which is the parent governance group. They meet monthly as well. And then we also have a management team at Head Start. You already know, just like you do with all district programs, you have legal and fiscal responsibilities to administer and oversee the Head Start Agency's Head Start program. This is the Head Start Management Systems Wheel. This is a slide taken right from the Office of Head Start, and leadership and governance is on the outside. And I kind of look at this as a hub to a wheel. If you look at the center, that is Quality Child and Family Outcomes, and all of us and all of the components in the wheel functioning well together with the same goal and purpose to ensure a high-quality program. And it's over a five-year project period. As Mr. Lori referenced, it's been three years this month, almost to the day, that we assumed took over the administration of the Head Start program from the interim agency, Child Development Institute, that had the grant for 18 months in between grantees. So this was still in the middle of the pandemic, you might remember, and all of the challenges we went through in those early months. But we've come out on the other side, and as Mr. Lori says, we turned a corner, have gotten our stride, and really things are much better. You know, we heard a lot during the election, are you better off now than you were four years ago? I'll say, are, is the Head Start program better off now than they were three years ago? Yes, absolutely. And thank you for your support of that throughout that. It's an inclusive leadership model, so the management team is the day-to-day operation, just like in the school district with your management, your principals, your leadership team in the buildings, your frontline staff, the teachers, those that prepare meals and do all of the things in between. So that's the management staff, the day-to-day opportunities and activities. The Policy Council helps inform program direction, and Mr. Lori attends one of those meetings annually. He's not required to be there, but he likes to come in and meet the parents, and they love having him there. And the governing body, that's you all. So those are the three entities. They do lump in governing body or tribal council. There are many Native American or American Indian Head Start programs around the country as well. Again, Head Start program leadership is inclusive in the process, and ultimate responsibility lies with the governing body, and that is really something to punctuate in this training, a little mini-training. I know you get training that you're required to do from State Education Department as well, so we're cutting back on some of this. So the Head Start Act is one component of the regulations. The other is the Head Start Program Performance Standards. They were just recently revised in August of this past year. Some things fleshed out a little bit more and were very targeted and had to be done within 60 days, and they have been. And there were others that were long-range goals, that are over 10 years, seven years, three years, but I just wanted to point that out as well. Head Start programs are operated, administered by different types of auspices, and Head Start here is a school system, is the grantee. So you can see, this is a slide from 2019. It's the most recent data they had at the federal level for me to use, but 14% of Head Start programs, the grantee is a school system. The closest one in New York State to us is Geneva, so the Geneva School District is a grantee. Head Start is in a primary building, and the principal in that building also oversees the Head Start program.
I think there's only three in New York State that Head Start is connected to the district, Niagara Falls, Geneva, and one in New York City.
Correct. It's at last check.
As opposed to the rest of the country where it's more ingrained in the school system. To me, it makes more sense. Those are our kids, they'll be our kids. We should be one seamless group. So I'm, you know, I'm, I'm glad that we're sharing and leading our kids to where they're ultimately going to be, and that's graduation.
And this is just a Venn diagram that shows how they're interconnected. So the governing body or tribal council at the top, to the left, if you're looking at it, Policy Council and the management staff, and together collectively provide leadership and strategic direction for the program. Within the governing body, you must have a fiscal expert, an education expert, and an attorney. Fortunately, we have representation between the district's leadership team and the Board of Education, and these are things we actually have to identify in the grant, so we make sure that that's noted in the grant. For the management staff in our model, and all Head Starts have to adhere to the same regulations, however, they may be packaged differently. Obviously, it's a little different in the school district. For example, we don't have to hire an HR administrator because the infrastructure already exists, so we're fortunate to have Maria. We have a school business administrator, fiscal responsibility, with Becky. So we don't have to hire our own. We don't have to hire another Earl. We already have one Earl, right?
And that's enough.
For facilities.
That's quite enough.
Where an independently-run Head Start would have to budget for those other costs involved. So we don't need to do that in our program because we have such a great team here. And Mr. Lori serves as the executive director in his role as superintendent in our model.
And that's why it makes more sense. The economy of scale, the saving of money we could put back into program. Why would we replicate that in a city like Niagara Falls? It never made sense to have duplicate roles who do the same thing. And what I would tell you is all of the people she mentioned are just happy and willing to take on the extra responsibility.
Very joyful in the beginning, remember?
I remember.
Those early months before we met all the staff.
Yes.
It was just us. And the, and the video webinars and conferences. Right, so. This is a little bit more involved. I'm not going to go through every single item, but it does break down the key responsibilities, and they are very, very similar to the responsibilities the board has.
No, go ahead.
Has as a whole. I do want to point out, our model does not have any delegate agencies, so sometimes you might see a reference to something like that. That would be if we received funding and then we delegated another agency or organization to run the program or a portion of the program. But we do not have that in our particular model. Some models as well will have an advisory to the board. We do not have that. If we ever wanted to have that, that's something we could do at some point, but at this point, it didn't seem necessary, but some programs elect to have something like that. So sometimes you might see reference to something and say, hmm, I wonder, you know, if we're doing that, and there's some things that we do not do in our program, but you have an option to do. I'm going to give a handout at the end that just is of this chart, and these are key activities that break down the management role, the policy council role, and the governing body role. And I'm using one example that many of you who were on the board at the time when the district acquired the Head Start program, you may recall, just to kind of show the different components. So the management team, that would be me and my team, we drafted the bylaws that we needed to have. One of the regulations states you must have bylaws for your parent governance, your policy council. Well, because we were a brand-new program, we didn't have them. They did not exist. So after consulting other directors and other Head Starts and getting some information from them, their blueprint, because many of the bylaws are very similar. They're all based on the regulation, we drafted regulations, and then, I mean, the bylaws. Then they were shared for input from the policy council, the parent component of governance. They gave their input, and we had to make sure we had representation from Head Start parents and early Head Start parents and community representatives. 51% of the Head Start Policy Council have to be made up of current, currently enrolled parents in the program. So you can transition off of Policy Council and be a community rep, and one of our former parents is doing that now. So after we prepared those, we went to Mr. Massaro, and we said, Mr. Massaro, we'd like you to review these bylaws and give us some input to make sure. So this is where we are able to utilize your resources and services. So Mr. Massaro reviewed them, gave us some input, and then it came to this body to approve.
Right.
So I wanted to kind of just take you through one of the examples up there that we, we actually had to do earlier on. So that was in year one that we did that. Lots of fun, remember?
Oh, yeah.
So, Mr. Lori referenced our federal monitoring review, and I thought this was a great opportunity just to share a little bit more. Back in December of 2022, we received what's called an FA1. That's a Focus Area 1 review. And at that time, it was virtual. It was not an in-person audit, as some people refer to it, or federal review. It was virtual. And the Head Start management team, including Richard, which Richard is our Head Start grant accountant, and he is involved in other grants in the district, and we responded to a series of questions, and there were some things they wanted us to send in advance. That is something early on that new Head Starts take part in, or even, you know, repeating Head Starts in their first part of the five-year cycle. Those usually happen in 18 to 24 months into the new five-year cycle. So at that time, we talked a lot about the condition of the program when we received it, what we did so far up to that date, and what our plans were moving forward. And there were little documents here and there that they wanted samples of. For example, health screening data was one of the things they wanted to look at, attendance data, and some of the financial aspects of the program, too, processes of how we go about spending our funds. So it was, it went very, very well. We received a very nice report following that at the time, and that was shared with this body and Mr. Lori. And then now we fast-forward. Typically, in your fourth year, you would have what's called an FA2, Focus Area 2, and that is now coming back and checking in with us. And this is in person. It will be a full week, and there'll be a team of individuals that will come out and meet with us. They will notify us, as Mr. Lori indicated, 45 days in advance. They may ask us to send some documents in advance or prepare for some documents, and they will want to create an agenda so they have an opportunity to meet with various stakeholders. They'll want to meet with our Head Start management team. They'll want to meet with fiscal team, HR, policy council representation, governing body, parents, frontline staff, and community partners. Once we have that information, we will get it to you, and then I will work with Mr. Lori in helping to coordinate and facilitate what the agenda will look like, because we'll have some say on what the availability is and the representatives that will be able to serve in various capacities. And I will also be available to help prepare you all for that when we get to that point. But it will be a full week of auditing lots of different things. One of the things that's happening right now is there's a series of webinars that they've prepared, and our Head Start management team has participated in many of them, and so has Richard. And one of the things is what they're referring to as a data tour. So prepare for a data tour to show samplings of the work, which is great. And so what we're doing, and meeting with my team, is making sure that we prepare for that as a self-assessment. So each of our service area coordinators are going through the data tour, and then they will present to me what we're going to share with the federal review team to show the samples of what we're doing. And if we have any shortfalls, we're going to correct that before they come. You know, maybe there's an area that we're thinking, I thought we had more evidence of this. Let's go back and strengthen that before the review. So it's an opportunity to prepare for that, and they've provided a lot of really great resources to prepare programs for the federal review. I know I shared a little bit with Maria last month, so. And more is unfolding as time goes on in preparation for that. Now, I want to bring up another thing that you should be familiar with as the board, and that is what's called Designation Renewal System. This actually came out in 2011, and it was a way for weeding out the poorly performing Head Starts around the country and strengthening and elevating the quality of other programs. So prior to 2011, if you were a Head Start grant, grantee, and you had the program in 1970, well, you still had it again and again and again. They never went up for competition. They just continued to kind of rubber stamp it. You'd recycle the grant and then continue to get funding. But one of the things, and I think it was a really good measure at that time, to elevate the quality, because sometimes when there's bad programs out there, it gives all the programs kind of tarnished reputation. So this is how we ended up applying for this, because two grantees prior to us lost the grant under Designation Renewal. Some of it was publicized in the newspapers, and one of them, as I recall, was, they had contracted, one of the former Head Starts had contracted with a bus company, and they did not follow through with all of the background checks for the contracted provider, because when you contract, you still have to make sure you're following the regulations, and that was one of them. And typically, if you have two or more deficiencies that are considered systemic, substantial failures in an agency, that usually is grounds for automatic competition. It'll go back out for competition. And if you have that, you still can apply oftentimes with corrective actions of what you'll do differently. So I wanted just to point that out. They did revise these Designation Renewal conditions in 2020.
And that's how we got it. So just so you, just so you know, that's how we received it. They put it out for RFP, very competitive, very lengthy RFP. We received it. So you know, we're in year three of a five-year cycle. So in case, just so you know where we're in the program, we officially got it three, three years ago, and that will be up every five years. And we're, we're going to make all of our marks. We're going to be able to not have any deficiencies. So I think it's, that's an important slide to know. And just so everybody knows, the two locations of the Head Start program are at our Community Ed Center. That's where our early Head Start kids are, on 60th Street, the one- and two-year-olds. And the other programs are at the DeFrancesco Center on 24th Street. It was named the DeFrancesco Center by the Head Start Group. Head Start selected that name because of Mr. DeFrancesco's long affiliation with them, so Head Start gave him that honor. That wasn't with the district at the time. And I just wanted to mention, you know, it was named for him, and Bobby, as we've celebrated him, was a strong proponent of Head Start and served on the policy committee. So thank you for letting me interrupt, and I just want to get that in there.
Oh, no problem. The Head Start programs around the country for preschool Head Start uses something called the class assessment. That's the classroom assessment scoring system. Our education supervisor has been trained in that, and it's measuring the interactions between the teacher and the students, and there are different indicators that look at the relationship as well as the environment and the learning activities. So there's a threshold that you must have in order to maintain as well. We're doing very well in that area, and we anticipate we will continue to do well in that area as well. that area as well. Prior to designation renewal, the class was not something that was used. It is not required for the infant toddler program, just the preschool age. And some school districts do utilize that as well. Two or more audit findings as well are also considered concern findings, if you will. And I know Richard and I have participated in webinars and we've learned of what are typical kinds of gotchas that the monitoring teams find, or typical kinds of out of compliance issues. And we felt very confident after talking that we're doing well in some of those common areas. Background checks was one of them. Also, failure to establish or take steps to achieve school readiness, those are areas that could be of concern. If your license is revoked, so we have to be licensed by the Office of Children and Family Services. If for some reason they revoked our license, it would be automatic designation renewal. If they suspended us for some reason under the Office of Headstart. Sadly, there are some headstart programs around the country that have had some cases of staff abusing children, sadly. And those would be an example of a suspension of the Office of Headstart. And if for some reason we were not following CACFP, or they kicked us out, that is the federal reduced free lunch program that we participate in, that we're required to as a headstart, and that's under the Department of Agriculture. So that would be another disqualifying. We had some things we had to iron out earlier on and some processes with that, but we've been able to do that successfully moving forward. What happens after the federal review? This is just a little summary here. So we will receive a report from the federal government with the outcomes, and they will include areas of compliance, what they refer to as non-compliance or deficiencies. And they will also include information of strong practices they observed, which is great. We always like to hear the positive things. Now, we know, and you all know too, it is not uncommon to have recommendations from a federal review team, or a state review team, or an audit of processes that you could do better, or that you could strengthen. We just don't want, you know, a strong deficiency or major out of compliance issue. We have made considerable strides since three years ago now, and we do not anticipate anything major. For areas that we're growing and evolving, those are not surprises to us. So they will see our efforts to make things better. The first six months, we really got a chance to see what we received, and I kind of look at it as a triage when you have to look at problems. So what are we going to do? Where do we stop the bleeding? Where do we give CPR? Where do we have to stitch things up and phase in over time? Because I have to admit, it was surprising to me what we received.
Yep.
And to Mr. Lori as well.
We were in the ICU when we took the program over.
Correct. We were in the ICU. And life support.
On life support.
And now we are in stable condition, and now we've been able to add on elements of quality. And we really feel optimistic of the direction we're going.
Yeah.
And I have to remind myself every once in a while, like, oh, my goodness.
Now we're home with forty-five day checkups. Okay, so we were in ICU and now we're home with forty-five day checkups. I mean, that's the best metaphor I can tell you, and that took three years to get there. But we inherited a program that was on life support. And I want to stop and congratulate you and the teachers and the support staff at Headstart that brought this back to life for the benefit of 141 kids. So I really, I really want, they deserve kudos. Next time you come back, I'm going to ask for the policy council to come. They are genuine, earnest parents and community members, and they deserve the credit, along with the staff too, for taking this back to just occasional doctor's visits. So thank you.
Thank you so much for that, Mr. Lori. They will report to us the findings. If there's anything that requires a corrective action plan, we will put one in place. It probably will be brought to the policy council. I shouldn't say probably, I know that it will. It will be brought to this body as well, and then we would submit that with follow-up. And regardless of the findings, our regional office will continue to practice their portion of oversight. I do meet monthly with our program specialists from the Office of Headstart Region Two. Region Two for Headstart is New York, New Jersey, Puerto Rico, and the Virgin Islands. The country is set up into different regions. So that is our region. We are part of Region Two Headstart in that five-year cycle. I did include some resources if you want further reading, which everybody loves that, right? Some follow-up reading. And at the end, I do have a handout I will give everybody, just of the chart of responsibilities. These were some pictures we've had taken in the past, and there's one on the right there, you can see Bobby. And that was the last event that he attended. It was July 1st of 2024. We had a wonderful press conference opportunity with Tim Kennedy, Senator Kennedy, and Mr. Lori, and the mayor, and other representatives. And we were fortunate to have a diverse mix of staff and parents and children. And the weather was cooperative, which is always nice when you're outdoors. So I want to take a moment to, to thank everyone here. Mr. Lori, for your unwavering commitment to early childhood in the city of Niagara Falls. I met Mr. Lori several years ago when I was still at Niagara University as the director of Early Childhood Initiatives, never thinking at that time I would ever be working for the district. I wasn't looking to go anywhere. And then through our shared passion for elevating early childhood in the city of Niagara Falls, and his visionary leadership championing that, this is kind of how it all happened. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And thank you to the board, Mr. Petrosi, Mr. Pareto, Mr. Consemi, Mr. Velardo. Mr. McLeod, you were not on the board in those early days when we got Headstart, but we welcome you as well. And I want to welcome and thank you, everybody here, for your support. It's been a journey and we appreciate that commitment that you made as a board to the children and families in this community. You are making a difference every single day, and we appreciate you.
I just want to make some summary comments and see if there's any board questions. First of all, excellent job moving through a sixty-three-page document, not glossing over anything, and I'm not trying to make light of that. The board's role is to know that they are the official governing body of Headstart, under, of course, under my responsibility down with the staff and Dr. Lynette. That is your role. We want to make sure that you are, you know that each month there is a Headstart report in your packet. I know you do review those monthly and vote on them. We do have an audit coming up. I, you know, I'm very comfortable and confident that we're going to have no findings, and if we do, we will correct things in a way that will make us better. I do want to invite Dr. Lynette back at some point with your policy council and parents for dinner and to meet the board and just to let the board meet some of these hard-working individuals that give their time to serve on their kind of quasi-board of education. I appreciate all of you. I've had the chance on our professional development days to go and meet with the staff. I try, anytime we have a PD day, I try to start my morning at Headstart and speak to the staff and reassure them that we appreciate their work to make our district better. We've tried to bridge the difference, meaning that we are one. It's not Headstart and the district. We're one district. We're one district, even though there's a denotation of Headstart. These are our kids. These are Niagara Falls kids. And I, again, I agree. This board's support of early education is par excellence. There is no district that does as much for one, two, and three- and four-year-old kids than you. You, you make a local share of about three, three and a half million dollars in the budget that we're going to talk about, where the, where the grants don't pay for things. We need budget, we need benefits help. The grant doesn't pay enough. So you commit that out of your general fund, $190,000 budget to do that. So that, that's a big leap. I want to, I want to tell you that there are two struggles that I think we have. One, Dr. Lynette working with Maria, I think we've turned the corner this year. It was always trying to find and hire high-quality people, because, and I'll just say what it is, a lot of people like to work for Headstart, but then they see great jobs in the district and they want to come here. So it's hard to keep people wanting to work with Headstart. That's okay. We are up-training those individuals and they can move. We hope they stay, but they can move. So we've turned a corner with staffing at Headstart. Secondly, our biggest challenge, our biggest struggle, is that we need to acquire more first-floor rooms to increase the number of one- and two-year-old kids that we have. I, I don't know if you remember, if you remember Twenty-Fourth Street, the DeFrancesco Center, it used to have that, that ski, that ski lift, that ski ramp in front of it. That was because we have to have an egress to get cribs in and out quickly in case of an emergency. So I think the biggest struggle we have now, and Earl has been really helpful and instrumental along with the Office of Family and Children's Services, in getting the five or six rooms prepared. We could use more, because our waiting list really is at one- and two-year-old kids.
There's forty-two on the waitlist as of right now for early Headstart.
Yeah. Now, now remember, these are one- and two-year-old children. We are under no obligation legally, but there's a moral obligation and an educational opportunity to, to instruct these children. So we will continue to push to expand the grant for more one- and two-year-old kids. I think we do a really solid job, three, four. Who would have thought fifteen years ago, we'd be talking about educating one, two, three, and four-year-old kids? But it's the way to break the poverty cycle, the illiteracy cycle, and the parent cycle.
That, that is the greatest need around the country. More and more school districts are serving their four- and three-year-old populations, and the greater need is for early Headstart. And our class sizes can only be eight to meet the regulations with two adult minimum for that. And there's just very few slots for infants and toddlers here, even in the city of Niagara Falls, for that particular age group of programs.
I want to thank, we thank a lot of people, but Congressman Higgins and now Congressman Kennedy have been big supporters of this. Again, this is federal money. So both Congressman Higgins previously and now Congressman Kennedy check in on us as well. And I want to mention her by name, because I'm sure we'll show this part of the board meeting to our audit team. Wendy Garrett is our Region Two liaison. She's just a godsend. It just, she works to get whatever we need. So Wendy, if you see this, I want to thank you publicly. Dr. Lynette, that's, that's a really great and succinct presentation. Is there any questions, board?
Yes, Russ.
I think, how many one- and two-year-olds do we serve?
We serve forty presently, and that's our maximum amount that we are funded for, for early Headstart slots.
And how about Headstart?
Headstart, as of right now, we have eighty-three. We have, since we've been in operation and, and it was severely under-enrolled, we've been at eighty-five to ninety typically, and we are slated to have eighty-five by the end of the month. As soon as the applications come in and we set up an appointment with the parent, we try to get fill those slots as soon as possible.
How many slots do we have?
Well, we have that, we're funded for 141 for Headstart, but that's where we have the under-enrollment, is in that population. So we want to, what they call convert slots. We want to convert Headstart slots to early Headstart, and we have to request that from the federal government to do that. Even if we have the space, we'd still have to ask for permission to do that.
Where do you think, where do you think, why do you think those slots are not full? It makes no sense to me.
Well, the reason they're not full, and we did have a community needs assessment that substantiated that, is in this particular community in the city of Niagara Falls, between the pre-K three, pre-K four, Headstart, LaSalle Early Childhood Center, Little Wonders over by the high school, the majority of three- and four-year-old population for parents that want their child to attend a program are being served already. So there's an oversaturation, and this is happening around the country. And then the flip side is happening where we don't have enough early Headstart slots, and that is not unique to us.
That makes sense. Yeah, so we've had a longstanding three-year-old program. I think your daughter attended a three-year-old program. We have a longstanding three-year-old program in our schools, and I see some of the, I appreciate our principals being here. They have programs in all of their schools from, except for Abbott, obviously, and parents, you know, sometimes like to do that. So that's why we want to turn those three and four slots into one and twos. But the ratio gets smaller, right? You can only have eight kids with two staff. And the need to be able to meet code gets more difficult.
Yes.
Because you got to be able to get those, you have to be able to move those students outside of the building in the unforced, you know, God forbid something happens. That's why we have them all on the first floor and Earl's team cut double doors in the CEC. We think we have another, at least one or two rooms over there at the CEC to add sixteen spots. So we're looking to do a conversion on that. Really don't, you know, really don't want to put that ski slope in front of the DeFrancesco Center again, but we've got to convert, Russ, those, those three and fours to one and twos. Is there any way to use the second floor?
There is not, unfortunately, because the regulations prohibit us for serving that age group on a second floor. It has to be a ground floor.
Okay. This is a highly regulated program, highly regulated program.
That's why a lot of people don't do it, because it is really involved to get a license for infants and toddlers. I want to point out to everybody, because you may not be familiar with or aware of, that we use the creative curriculum for the infant toddlers and twos. So you might not be aware that there is a continuum of learning. And so the same curriculum that we use in our pre-K program is used in early Headstart, and we had training in the summer for our teachers and our teacher assistants on that model as well. We use the same developmental screening, the ages and stages, in partnership with Help Me Grow. So there's a lot of things that are very similar. Our teachers, our preschool age Headstart teachers, serve on the curriculum committee, selecting the themes, the units of study. So I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that. Some people might be thinking, is there a curriculum? What are you doing? We do have to use a curriculum, and that is required of Headstart.
Does the curriculum, curriculum that you're using align with the school district's curriculum for three and four-year-olds, five?
Yes. It is, in fact, Teaching Strategies is the company, they have a crosswalk that shows how it is aligned. So it's aligned here, it's aligned to New York State. So again, it is in alignment with that, absolutely.
So we have a waiting list. How do we go about selecting who gets in? Is it first come, first served? Are there requirements that families have to meet?
It's a good question.
To get into this? How does, how does that work?
There is criteria for selection that is established by the federal regulation. We do live in a community where there is a high need for families that are socially or economically challenged. So we do not, we are not a community that has a hard time meeting the regulations. So we have to look at the federal poverty level, which usually, it's about this time of year, they release the new one for 2025. So that is one of the guidelines we use. We can have a hundred to 130% over the poverty limit, and they have expanded the requirement. So years ago, if you were, we'll call working poor, struggling, but you qualified for SNAP benefits, you would fall between the cracks, but the Office of Headstart changed that. So you might be over income financial-wise, but because you receive SNAP benefits, you come in under that criteria. So 90% of our enrollment typically, or more, is children that meet the federal income guidelines. And there is a criteria of selection that will be brought forth to this group annually to review and approve. It's typically a received and filed, since we've put it in place, and it's all based on the regulations, but it's a point system. So when you apply, depending where you are in there, points are allocated in a system. We use something called Child Plus for our child and family database, where you use Power School in the schools, and there is a formula based on all of that. And some extra points might be given if you're a teen parent, an extra point if you are grandparent raising a grandchild. Homeless families go right to the top. That's the most points. And typically, again, in some communities, it might be more challenging. This is not a community where we really have to struggle to meet the requirements. But 10% of our families can exceed the income guidelines and come in under a special need, a recommendation. But this is not a community where we really have to go down that path, because many of our families are just automatically eligible. There still are things they have to submit, and our team has worked with Maria and her team in registration. So they gather those additional pieces, those additional components, to make sure that they meet that criteria. And just like the registration packets are passed on to Kelfis or DJ Man, they're passed on to us, and then the families are enrolled in our program. Did I answer your question? Okay.
So we use that point system and rank them and bring them in. So we use that point system and rank them and bring them in. So our real challenge here is to try to do the conversion, get more one and twos, because I believe in this city, we have three and four covered. We need to cover one and twos. Just pause for a moment and think about that. You're talking about educating one and two-year-old kids. They're closer to being in cribs than classrooms, and we're bringing them into schools. And again, there's a great deal of research why, how that's going to prepare them better, and something that I completely believe in. So I want to thank you for your presentation and for your work, and please know you're appreciated, as is your staff. Convey that to them.
I will definitely do so, and I appreciate all of you here in this room, because every one of you have helped me in some way since that first meeting I had with all of you a long time ago. And Patty Robel was with me at the time, if you remember, back quite a while ago.
It really, I have to say this too.
When I was still in Niagara.
It was Patty Robel's idea. Patty Robel's the one that really dug this out, if you know Patty Robel. She's the one that dug this out. And so what do you think? And, you know, I said, I think it's a great idea. I'll get to work, Patty. So she was really the one.
Teaching at the university in early childhood, I always covered Head Start, so I've kept my finger on the pulse. So I walked down to Patty's office one day, and I said, Patty, are you aware that the Head Start program in Niagara County at the time there, Niagara County Head Start, is up for competition? Do you think Mr. Lori would be interested in pursuing this?
Sure.
And she said, I think so. Let's try to get ahold of him right now. And Patty picked up the phone, and Mark just happened to answer the phone.
Not happened to, Patty calls, I answer it.
And that was the beginning.
I saw it was Patty Robel, I got to drop everything. Earl, get out of my office. That's how it went.
It was the very beginning, and here we are now.
Yeah. Thank you, Lynette.
Thank you very much.
Doctor, appreciate it. Great job.
Thank you.
So our next topic is, I'm going to introduce this, and I, Mr. McLeod, I'm going to put you on the spot here, because it's your first foray through this, and I want to make sure that, I'm going to use you kind of as our benchmark. Our board, at least in my nine years as superintendent, have used the budget process in this form. And, you know, I'm sure there'll be questions, but I want to make sure that we go slowly through it, and I don't want to, you know, put you out in any way, but I want to make sure that you completely understand this budget process. It's one of the, it is one of the most important things that we do. It's the lifeblood of the district. We have, I believe, we've simplified our budget and put it on one piece of paper. Now, when I say we've put this budget on one piece of paper, and I look to Julie and Becky, who will come up here next, with one click, Julie and Becky could bring you slide after slide after slide that would fill this room of backup information. But I think for clear understanding by the community, by board members, et cetera, having something right in front of them, one piece of paper, has worked well. It's transparent, it shows everything, and it's been a pretty successful model, I think. I would hope that board members have agreed. So tonight begins one of seven budget meetings. For the next seven board meetings, we are going to take thirty minutes or so at each board meeting and prepare you for the 2025-26 school district budget. And we're, so what I want to tell you about this is, each one of the seven meetings, we're going to refine, 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 and refine. It's fluid. So by the end of March, you're going to see two things that I will promise you, and we've delivered eight other times. One, you're going to see a budget number that the public has to go to the polls on May twentieth and click yes or no on. The number is all they click yes or no on. Number two, it's a budget number that will balance. The revenues that we're bringing in and the expenses that we're putting out on that meeting in March will be zero. There will be no gap. There will be no gap. The first priority that we're going to set in doing this, as we've done before, is this. We're going to set a priority of no tax increase. No tax increase. That's your call, but I am going to recommend that we should be able to do this without raising the tax levy one cent. That's number one. Number two, the goal is to take everything that we have in the school district today, just put a picture in time today and say, we need to do it next year. That's the next thing that we want to do. We're going to roll everything forward one year. Now, the challenge of that is, I'm going to introduce at some point some things that we may need to add to the budget. The third challenge, or the third thing that we want to accomplish is, we do not want to lay off, cut any current FTEs. No layoffs, no cuts. We want to roll it forward, we want no tax increase, we want no cuts. Next, we don't want to reduce any of the programs. Now, we may change programs, we may change job titles or positions, but we want to keep things stably going. So this evening, what we're going to show you for the first time are two slides. The first one will be the budget, and in this budget, this is what we're working towards for May twentieth. You'll have to approve this budget in March or April, or April tenth. We're going to ask you to vote on this April tenth, so you can see where those seven meetings are. And we're going to work our way through this for the next seven meetings, and the bottom line is the number. So I'm going to ask Becky and Julie to come up. I am going to interrupt them maybe twenty to thirty times, because I get very, very excited about the budget, even though they do all the work. And I just want you to know that, and here's your own, very own copy of it, so you have a piece of hard copy. I haven't memorized, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I want you to know, I want you to know that we have the absolute two best financial people in New York State with respect to the budget.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is the one-pager. I'm going to, I'm going to do, if you don't mind, we're going to do revenues first, and when we do revenues, we're going to let Julie do some of the talking, but I want to highlight the revenue side of it first, and then we're going to go to expenses, and we're going to have Becky do expenses. So Julie's the good cop here, she gets to tell you about all the money we're getting. Becky's the one that's going to spend all the money. First thing I want to show you on this, and then I'll let Julie get into it in more detail. We've never had this line, but it's called a true-up. See the 1.3 million true-up? This is money that we, after the budget was passed last year for this year's budget, came into us. We got about a million three. It was all a matter of timing. It's a good thing. The next line is the foundation aid. Foundation aid is kind of the bread and butter of this district. We build our budget on foundation aid. The foundation aid line at seven million dollars far exceeded what we had on paper about a week ago. That's a six percent increase from year to year, which I have to say, to the governor's credit, nice job. Remember, this is the floor. This is the floor on that foundation aid. The legislature still could go back and add to it. They have in the past, and sometimes they haven't. That's the floor. The next line I'd like you to look at is building aid. See the 2.3 million, Ray? If you go down, and Julie will go through this in more detail, the 2.3 million. We have to, next year, we have to start paying off the capital project that we're in. You know how you get, we get our ninety-eight percent reimbursement? That's the money we get back. We'll talk more about that. The next lines are something I want to highlight, compliment everybody, interest. That's above what we had projected. We are doing so well with our investments that we think conservatively that we're going to get an extra 552, we're going to make an additional 552,000 in interest, followed by the bottom line below it, tax collection. The city is collecting, the city collects our taxes. We're doing very well. Three hundred and sixty-one thousand above it. From there, I'll let Julie explain the lines on the revenue side. This is all the money coming in.
May I make a comment? And I want to make sure I'm correct. These are not the total numbers, these are the change in the numbers.
Correct.
Correct.
I want to make sure everyone understands.
Russ, that's a good point.
This is the change over to last year.
Change over from last year to this year. Additional revenues from one year to another year.
Someone outside wouldn't understand, wouldn't understand that scene this for the first time.
Right.
These are changes from last year.
Russ, you're like an accountant.
So we are starting right with the 24-25 revenues. That is our budgeted revenues for this current fiscal year. We're in that 184 million dollar number. So that's our starting point, and then from there, we factor in any assumptions or changes, we believe, for next year. So as Mr. Lori mentioned, we had that state aid true-up that was just due to the timing of when the governor's budget was released. And then the foundation aid, that seven million dollar increase, that was definitely very favorable to us. She did, there was a minimum of two percent, but we did receive six percent, and some of that is due to the changes in the foundation aid formula. They updated some of the poverty measures, and so that's been favorable to us, which is something that we've advocated for. And as Mr. Lori said, we hope that we will also receive more as, in the coming months. We then get to our reimbursable aids, which is our BOSI's aid, our excess cost aid, and our transportation aids. So those are aids that we receive based on what we spend. So as we anticipate spending more in 24-25, we would anticipate our revenue to also increase for 25-26. Mr. Lori mentioned the building aid of that 2.3 million for ABFA, but there is also building, there's also going to be a decrease for building aid, and that is because aid is falling off for a 2009 capital project, but at the same time, the debt is falling off also.
Right.
So as the project gets paid off, we no longer.
Is it Niagara Street, Earl? That's a good point, Julie. See the negative 929? Fifteen years ago, you built Niagara Street. It's falling off, and so we're having a decrease in the building aid. So you've got to think back fifteen years here and do this. So we're going to lose almost $900,000 on the Niagara Street project. That's a one-time thing only.
Yes.
Just because this is the year.
Yep. And then in the governor's first executive run charter transition aid, it is showing a decrease of 146,000. We haven't received the backup to that calculation yet, but that number may change throughout the upcoming months of meetings. So in total, the changes for state aid, the state aid adjustments, I should say, it was an increase of 12.7 million dollars. So very favorable. And then Mr. Lori mentioned those other revenue adjustments. For interest and tax collection, that is money that we estimate anticipating, we are going to exceed our budget amounts for the 24-25 school year, so we're factoring that change in for 25-26. The only real decrease is our BOSI's refund. That decreased for our current year, and we do expect that to remain flat going forward. So in total, our total projected revenue adjustments, 13,385,202, which brings us to total projected revenue of just over 198 million.
So we think we're getting a little bit over 198 million through those funds. We're going to, that's what we're going to take in, 198 million dollars, okay? Now, if we could segue to what we think we need to spend, all right? So a couple of points here. Some of these are estimates, because we don't have the official numbers yet. In the next seven meetings, we'll tighten these up a little bit. We were very, we weren't very, we were very honest. We think we were very honest in these numbers, based on last year. Obviously, we're a people organization, so a lot of our money is salary and wages, and Mr. Petrosi makes a really good, great point, as he does usually, usually. These are the increases above this year's spending. So just for the CSEA, because they're at the top, we expect, based on raises and steps, that's another 482,000 that CSEA will have to pay out. I just want to point out a couple of things, and then I'll let Becky go through it. We were kind of shocked last year on the property casualty. It went up thirteen percent last year. I hope it doesn't again, but we built in the same number. Next, just take a look at that special ed tuition, the tuition line, twelve percent increase. That's a very, 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 very big number right there. Twelve percent increase. That's a lot for, those are out-of-district students?
Yes.
Those are, you know, sometimes we bring you resolutions for out-of-district students. Twelve percent increase is a lot there.
What do we credit that, for that increase?
We do. So in the following year, that's where you'll see the excess cost aid also increase.
What, yeah, we have, I'll just answer your question. I know you know this, because we've talked about it. We have two students that we are required to pay for in Massachusetts. Remember this story? Two, $250,000 for those two students. So they're, it's going, we'll get some money back, but it's going to increase twelve percent. That's for two students that we have a legal obligation to pay for. You can see ERS and TRS. ERS is the actual rate, that's employee retirement. TRS is the teacher's retirement system, a little bit of a decrease, which is good. Here was something that, you know, shocked our system last year a little bit, health benefits. We usually put in five percent, you know that. Last year, we got hit with a nine percent increase, so we put in nine percent this year. Better not go above that. And I will stop there and let Becky talk through this side.
Okay. I think we have a good baseline to go with, and as you see at the top, the current year, our expected expenditures are 190,992,049. Again, the changes are shown below what we anticipate. For all of the salaries and wages, we are taking the current staffing level in the general fund as of today, or, you know, a week ago when this was done, moving everyone forward by their contractual raises and steps, and we anticipate those changes to be those amounts like 482,000 for CSEA, little over 200,000 for the tall unit, which are the associates, just under three million for NFT, which is the largest bargaining unit in the district.
Seven hundred and four members.
Mm-hmm. ASC are the administrators, the NIAS are non-instructional administrators. Then we have contracts, which are individual contracts, like the superintendent and different positions.
It's not all the superintendent.
No.
Calm down with that.
No.
Becky.
And then we have substitutes, which last year, that increase was much, much larger, but now we've leveled off, and we have a good sub-base again, and things have pretty much leveled off. That's just based on anticipated increase in salaries and usage. The extra-duty pay-home teaching, that is, the need has increased exponentially, and of course, then so does the cost. Insurance premiums, we're estimating, as the superintendent said, another thirteen percent increase, and that increases on all of our insurance that we purchase, which is the general liability, the student accident insurance, the cybersecurity insurance, et cetera. Various contract increases, until we know individual items or individual contracts and what to expect, we just estimated three percent. Last year, that was a three percent estimate, and a lot of them came in within that estimate, so we're, we felt we were in a good place to keep it at that rate. Transportation is based on the CPI. We don't know that number until the end of May. The last two years, it was in the three percent and 3.9% range, so we felt three and a half percent was a fair anticipated increase on those contracts. The tuitions, including charter school, we're estimating at a five percent increase. Some special ed tuitions, we estimate might be higher, but that's a number that you'll probably see changes in as we get better information. Tuitions for BOSI's, we have those tuition rates already. They've been approved by the BOSI's board. Those did increase 12%. So based on that, we are looking at increasing other areas of BOSI's that, where we make purchases, but not to that degree. We don't expect those to rise any more than, hopefully, like three percent, I mean, four percent, we estimated. The abandoned interest for ABFA, we borrowed in July to repay the general fund is, and to. to fund the project over the course of this year. We have to pay that back in July, which is in the upcoming budget year. The interest we have to pay is $1.3 million. We borrowed $29,342,500. And then we go on to the debt service. That is the debt service before the current project is borrowed. That is just based on the debt service schedule, the amortization tables of our debt that we currently pay. The debt service that we're anticipating for the new project, we estimate the payment will be about $2.6 million next year. ERS, as the superintendent said, that is a known rate. That's an increase with, based on what we anticipate in salaries. TRS, it's an estimated decrease of .11%. And you see it increasing, even though it's a rate decrease because of the increase in salaries. Health insurance active in retirees, I think we have to, to be, you know, responsible stewards of the budget and the money, we have to estimate that 9% until we know differently.
Yeah, it better come in less than that. If you're watching New York 44, it better come in less than that.
And then FICOM Medicare, that's just based on salaries, and that's the increase year to year. So without that anticipated new bond, our increase in spending is 4.9% year-over-year. But with the new bond that we would be paying debt on, the increase jumps up to 6.16%. But that's really in line with what the governor increased foundation aid by for is that, that 6.05%. So I'm...
Yeah, I would argue that, though, the governor increased a 6%. Our real increase is, our budget to budget is 4.1%. I would argue that because, take out the capital project, which we have, we did, we really are increasing a budget of, we're growing by 4%. So I think that, you know, trying to stay in line. And I don't want to have a 10% grow, I mean, you have a lot of questions. The bottom line is, we believe...
Mark, what is ERS and TRS? I'm sorry.
Yeah, ERS and TRS, Becky.
Oh, ERS is the employee retirement system. That is for all non-instructional, like the CSEA group, the TAL group, the civil service positions. TRS is the teacher retirement system. That is for instructional staff, any certified staff falls under that retirement system.
So the bottom line is, we're going to take in 198. We think we owe 202. So if you scroll up, first blush, one of seven meetings, there's a difference of $4.7 million. The, the, the challenge will be, in seven meetings, to get that number to zero. I, I, I want to assure you, we'll do that in order to get it. The other challenge will be to make sure that the number goes out to the public, is correct at 202 and change. These, these are going to change each meeting because we're going to get a number here, a number there, and we're going to keep solidifying it and strengthening it. But if we had to propose a budget today, today, which is three months away from the actual time when we have to do it, there'd be a $4.7 million gap. How can we bridge that gap? I can tell you the ways. Some of them, for me, are non-starters, but it's up to you. You can raise taxes. And by the way, let me tell you, this year, we'll have a positive tax cap. Remember last year, we had a negative tax cap, and we needed 60% of the voters? This year, it will be a positive tax cap for many reasons. That's number one, we could do it. We could cut positions and programs. I highly don't recommend that. Don't recommend that. We can hope that we get more foundation aid money. May happen, may not. Or we can look at, we can look at a combination of them, or we can go to the use of reserves. Last year, I will tell you, we were at this point, and the gap was 6.5 million. We got it down to about 6.4 million. You authorized full use of reserves. I'm happy to tell you, when it all came out in the wash and trued up, we used zero reserves when, when everything came in, zero. So on the column there are the use of reserves that we could use, reserve for debt. We will be using reserve for debt. We have to use reserve for debt. It's required. So in the next meeting, you'll see what's required. We'll have to use that. I'm going to estimate about $900,000 to, to bring it down. So there's the first thing you'll probably see, which you could see what that'll already do to the gap. Then, it will be your choice. We'll make recommendations to you about those reserves. If you scroll up just a little bit more, I'll stop there, right there, if you would. See where it says budget considerations? In the ensuing weeks, we're going to fill that in. Those would be things that we'd want to add possibly to the budget. And I'm going to give you a for instance or two. We may want to add, Earl's telling me that one of our salt trucks or two of our salt trucks need replacing. We may need to purchase a salt truck. We may want to add a program, instructional. I'm kind of making things up here. We're going to put, start filling in that box so that you can say yes, no, what have you. We're not ready yet. If you scroll up some more, Ray, more, more, more. These are the dollar amounts that we have in reserve, okay? These are the dollar amounts that we have in reserve. The use of fund balance, that 7.6 million is unrestricted. We can apply pretend. 4 million to it right now, it's over with. You know, but I'm not going to recommend that, but you could do that, and we're done. Or we could use a combination of these. There's a lot of money in ERS, TRS, EBOLAR. We'd have to use those for specific budget lines. We have the, we have the debt service reserve. We def, we have to use that by, by, by regulation. We have the largest in the history of the world workers' comp reserve, as requested by one member at the board who works at a dry cleaners, the largest workers' comp reserve in the history of the world. And you remember when we had zero in that column, which is a good thing, we could use that. We have grants that we could apply. We do have some Greenway funds, not a lot. And the cafeteria balance, that just is to show you what we have in reserves. We can't use that to offset this budget. We can't, because that's a separate fund. But I want the public to know where all of our money is, and you to know where all of our money is. So what I would say, and then I'll open it up for questions, this is a pretty good position to be in on January 23rd, 2025. Pretty good, pretty good position. We, we have some work to do. We will have some requests to add that we're going to ask you for. But over the course of this next seven meetings, we're going to try to zero in on that final number and also reduce that 4.7 to zero. And each week, you'll see it get smaller and smaller, but then there'll be some things that we need. And you may agree that we need to buy these salt trucks, or not, or say, can, Earl, can you get them to limp along, or whatever you want to say, right? We'll give you our best thinking on those things. So that's the one pager. I just, it, it's, it's a lot to take in. I know you're pretty astute with numbers. The board has been through this before, but does it make sense? Really, what? Yeah, and again, I just want to reiterate, this is early in the game, early in the game. You know, Saturday, we have our lobby day with the legislators. I've already been talking to the legislators. You know, we did get a healthy amount of money from the state, healthy amount. 7 million's a healthy, healthy amount, healthy amount. So it kind of mitigates our, our negotiating power there. But, you know, that's the floor. We're going to get that. I, I, you know, another $500,000 would be great. That's where we're at, members of the board. Questions?
Actually, I have a couple of comments.
Okay.
Property casualty insurance, that, it's a good number, it's probably going to be low. Those fires in California, the reinsurers are in trouble. So that, I'm glad you put a good nu, you know, a hard number in there. Health insurance, nobody knows. The new drugs are hitting the market, costing a fortune. That, that's probably, it, it's probably a decent number, maybe low.
Maybe.
Maybe, but it's, it's, I'm glad you're budgeting your good numbers.
Yep. Yeah, we're, we're not trying to cut it here. We're, we're putting 9%, 13%. In a previous year, we put 5% and hold.
It's changing. Property casualty, nobody knows. But I do have one comment, one, I have a caution.
Yep.
The foundation aid added 7 million into our budget this year. And we probably, out of the box, guessed 3 million, 3.5?
We guessed 3.5?
Okay, so let's use 3.5. So we have an extra 3.5 million this year, we probably will never see again, or may not see again.
Well, I would hope that this is the new baseline going forward.
Yes, but you won't have that 7 million in that number.
Increased.
You won't, you, right, you, you, if we keep this, this 7% or 6%, that would be great. If you, if you feel, do you feel we'll keep that number? Or is that a one shot?
Here, for this year, for next year?
No, for next year, go for it.
For the following year, for '26, '27? I'm hope, yeah, I, I get your point.
You follow my point?
I do. I'm hopeful, it's a double-edged sword here. Why, I, why are we doing so well here, I think? Because they're factoring in more money for districts in poverty. They, they're using a new part of the formula called SAE, small area income something. And we're, we're, sadly, sadly, we're, this is a commodity for us. We're falling into a good place where we're getting it. You know, I, who knows, Russ? The, the foundation in formula is in flux. So your point is well taken. They may adopt it forever, they may not, and we might be back. It's an unknown number today.
Right, well, that's actually, part of the question is, that's not a number fix going forward.
No, but that new formula, if that formula stays, and there's not that much fluctuation in the district as far as enrollment or poverty levels, poverty rates.
You can see where I'm going with that? I mean, if you take 3.5 million and add it to 4.7, you got an 8.5 million deficit, which would be very hard to overcome, even if you used reserves. You, you're buying three, four years and...
Right.
And I don't want to see that.
No.
You know what I mean? I, I, again, just a caution.
You're talking about...
Not a panic, a caution.
You're talking about '26, '27, and I think you're right. We have to be aware of that, because we don't know what they're doing with this foundation aid formula. You know, they, they did a whole study on it. Are they following it, not going to follow it? Are they going to take parts of it? We don't know. All we know is that this is what they, the governor's baseline is for this year. Your point is well taken for the future. The other thing, and I'm not going to go very far into this conversation, Russ, to, support your point, is we have, the district, we have got to be very cautious, cognizant, and aware that we are offsetting a lot of salaries through federal money. There's federal money for IDEA, that's special ed, in Title I, that may or may not remain with us. We don't know where that's going to be. Not going to go any further with that conversation. But we, but we've got to be cognizant of that, as much as we have to be of the foundation aid formula.
Well, you have, the Department of Education could go away at a federal level. The governor is, has a political challenge ahead of her, so she's next year.
Right, no, you're right.
We have a lot of things that are in our favor right now.
Right.
That may not be next year. It's just a caution.
I agree with you. And again, you're right, because we got in this, we, we got to this good position because we didn't look one year at a time. We looked two, three, five years ahead, and we watched the trends. We can't ever regress. And to use 5, 6, 7 million of reserves is an unsustainable answer. I, I, I get it. I, I have to say this, though. Our kids need everything we got.
They need every bit of it.
They need every bit of it. Our kids need every bit of it. I will go down to the end saying, our kids deserve this. Our savings are not only on this paper, but our savings are in our staff for kids. And we've always believed in that.
Mark?
Yeah.
I said it, with the, with the federal funds, the one-shot revenues, we were one of the
Only.
Only few districts that came out of this, where we're head above water, not panicking. You look at other districts, you look at Buffalo, they're all a nightmare.
Not just districts, cities.
So a city's in...
Look at cities, talking about federal funds. We came out of the federal fund thing, allocations, in a good position.
Because we were smart.
Looking ahead, you were smart looking ahead. When you insisted on one shots out of that, when you insist on air conditionings and things that we needed for the buildings, it was smart, and, and we're reading the benefits. As an aside note, we had 17, $17 million audited today of our federal funds, and less than 1/100 of a percent are in question. Of $17 million that we had audited today, they're questioning us on $27,000. And I think we have a good, that's...
Congratulations.
That's incredible. That's incredible on our ARP funds. I, we still have one more round of money to get audited, but, you know, I'm damn proud of that. I'm damn proud of that. Other questions? Hi, Rob.
Hey, Rob. Sorry I was late. Appreciate you.
We miss you. I have one other slide I want to show you before we conclude, and then we'll finish up on time on, on, this is on budgeting. Do you have this other slide? So as an anticipatory set, you're going to see this every week at the board meeting. This is the other side I wanted to put out there. Controller DeNapoli does this for all districts, all 700 districts in the, in the state. This is the Niagara Falls district for the last three years. I, I'll go through it. You get a point system on your stress. And if you were in high stress, you get written up and you get a lot of bad... We, we are, again, no designation, meaning we have no stress physically. I'm really proud of that. Our points went up a few, listen to this, our points went up, why did our points go up from 13 to 20? Because we didn't collect as many free lunch applications. That's why our points went up. Now, now, just think of this. If we're giving everybody a free lunch and a free breakfast, why would most people turn in a lunch application? It didn't put us in any danger, but you may ask yourself, why did it go from 13 to 20? Because we didn't have as many lunch applications turned in. The bottom line is, your district has no fiscal stress for the, I mean, you could take this back eight years, it's no designation. Environmental stress? How about this? We made an improvement. The highest is high, we've always been at moderate, now we're down to susceptible. We're going the right way on environmental stress, too. What is that categorized? That is about the environment around us, things that we don't have control of, poverty, et cetera. Why did we go down, Becky?
And actually, the reduction of economically disadvantaged students for those lunch applications helped in that category.
Drop it.
But the bigger item that helped reduce that score is our lower student-to-teacher ratio than we had had in prior years.
Right. So class size went down, and we picked up, we, we didn't get as many points against us because our class sizes got smaller. So this is just a good slide for you to see. Your names, our names won't get in the paper for this. We should get recognized for being this. You'll see all the districts that are high. We won't be one of them, and this is going to be released to the public soon. So I just wanted to show you that. The, we, we have had no changes to the resolutions that we're going to ask you to look at in the, at 7 o'clock. No, no changes. No changes at all. And the personnel report is the same personnel report that you received two weeks ago. Is that correct, Maria? No changes to that personnel report? You received it, we went through it two weeks ago, and no changes to any of the resolutions or short-term contracts. Any, if you have any questions, stop me during the vote, and we'll explain them along the way. So that's our story, and for the evening of January 23rd, we're sticking to it. All right. Folks, you want five, or you want me to start? You don't have to ask him, you want five, or you want me to start? Okay.
How old are the four time? You guys take a break, I'll, I'll go, I'll go rest.
All right, everybody, please stand for the pledge of the flag.
All right, everybody, please stand for the pledge of the flag. And we'll now have a prayer by Mr. Tony Peretto.
Okay, here's a prayer. Dear Lord, we ask for wisdom and guidance and fairness for educators, students and administrators. All the people that are employed here at the district, and all the people here around the city. May we bless them and bless everybody here so we can get a good job done. And keep ourselves financially fiscal, stable, and as well serve all the children of this district. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Judy, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bass, I believe you're with us.
Mr. Bass?
I believe he's, it shows that he's-
Show him here.
Yep. Mr. Billson?
Here.
Mr. Kinsimi?
Here.
Mr. Capizzi is with us, I believe?
Yes, they're probably on mute.
Uh, Mrs. Dunn is excused, Mr. McLeod? Mr. Peretto?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo? Mr. Petrosi?
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bass, Mr. Capizzi, I will assume all your votes are yays. If they are nays, please stop me. And Judy, at the end of the meeting or tomorrow, would you verify that it's correct information?
Certainly.
That way we don't have to wait for the delay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll start off on letters of communication, what do I have here? These are agenda related. I do have two speakers. Folks, three minutes, please make it three minutes if you could. I'm going to start with Deacon Gibbs. I will let you know when it's thirty seconds, sir. And there is a timer up on the board.
First of all, good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Board, happy new year, buddy.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Deacon Gibbs, I'm a member of the Men Standing Strong, as well as affiliated with the Lions Club. I, um, I remember speaking in front of the board, uh, a little while back, and I was, um, in regards to the children and the things that we stand for. The Men Standing Strong stand, um, for, um, betterment of the community and what's best for the, for the children. We put on a lot of functions, um, some of which I see, Mr. Laurie, I'm sure I would have seen some of you, too, uh, would have been there supporting, if you would have known. But, um, we do a movie night, and we house sometimes over two hundred fifty kids. Uh, that's not including parents. We, we put on, um, summer functions such as Fun Day, sometimes that'd be over, sometimes five hundred people. But I'm here asking the board today if, if it's within your budget, and, and if you will. First, oh, first let me say that we are, we are, we have the five oh one C three two, the, um, Leshaw Educational Club. But, uh, I'm here to ask if the board could see, uh, any way possible to help fund us. And I won't put a dollar amount on this thing, because I'll let it be, of course, your decision. To help us, we, we, this summer, we're, we're, we're planning on taking the kids camping, fishing, hiking, and, uh, and even some, um, school lesson things, uh, we'd like to do with them as well. But we, we need funding, and I'm here to ask if, if you will, and if you can see it within your budget, to, to, uh, assist us in, in, um, helping the kids after all, uh, they are our future. And we're trying to do so much with them, oh, even including, uh, teaching them how to open a bank accounts, uh, to, you know, uh, checking savings, how to budget their monies, and things such as that, and, and more things. Uh, uh, this summer, roller skating, uh, hiking, whatever, whatever, you know, we deem that would, uh, help make them better citizens of society. So, if you can and will, see it in your budget to help us out, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Gloria Dulce.
Who? I'm sorry.
Well, it's good to see you again.
Well, it's good to be seen, praise God. First, giving honor to God. I'm so honored to be able to come before you. I haven't been here in some time, but happy new year to all of you. Uh, and, uh, we're looking forward to even a better year. I like to commend these ladies for the job that they do for the district. God bless. Also, praise God, yes, clap for them. And our great, precious, humble superintendent, Mr. Laurie. He deserves a round of applause. And I guess all you can give yourself a round of applause, because if it wasn't for all of you, it couldn't be possible. But I, I just want to stand and say that, um, Men Standing Strong together, we are very humble and honored for the support that we have received from, uh, a lot of the board members. Mr. Velardo, when it comes to, uh, gift certificates, he always helps with that, as well as the other board members, Mr. Kinsimi, uh, and that. So, uh, I think this is our new board member, Mr. McLeod. Praise the Lord, I haven't got to you yet, but congratulations on your seat. I know you'll do a terrific job. Um, Mr. Petrosi, I think that you sold your place, didn't you? But that didn't have anything to do with your pocket, so I'll still be reaching out to you. Again, I just, um, here to just say that to all of you, that we really appreciate the job that you are doing for our children. And I do speak for our children, and for, I do believe their parents. Because, uh, even with movie night, you provide, uh, food, dinner for the parents and for our children. And when we have movie night, we have, uh, guest speakers that can do, uh, contribute to our children's life, um, well, way of life. We will be having C P R classes, the kids are going to be taught that. We did that a couple of months ago, and they truly, truly enjoyed it. And those kids learned a lot. Because we know that anyone can save a life if they know how to do it, you know? So, uh, that'll be next, um, next Friday at Abbott School. You always are invited. Mr. Wooton, he has been, um, a frequent guest of ours. And again, um, I just want to say over and over again, you are all, all welcome. Because when our children see the leaders of our community, then they know they can even be that as well. Um, I've had, um, the pleasure of having a lot of support from, so if you want to, we ask for gift certificates, you're welcome to support by giving a gift certificate. Niagara Falls High School, their staff has been very gracious in helping as well. Since we don't have any funds, any money, we look forward to your support. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, Gloria. Okay, moving on. Going to move into our agenda this evening. If anyone has any questions, don't hesitate to stop me. Um, number four, recommended actions of the superintendent. Take four oh one and four oh two together, oh one is the minutes of December twenty-four. Oh two is approval of budget transfer number six. Jimmy, on the motion, second on the, uh, second, Nick, any questions? Call the roll, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. We have four oh four, the treasurer's report, along with four oh five, budget status report, that are received and filed. Moving on to four oh six, personnel report, certificated.
Nick, second.
Nick moved, Rob second. Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Billson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsimi?
Yes.
Mr. McLeod? Mr. Peretto?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo? Mr. Petrosi?
Yes. Thank you, thanks for the help on that, Rob. Four oh seven, personnel report classified. Moved by Mr. Billson, seconded by Mr. Peretto. Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Billson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsimi? Mr. McLeod? Mr. Peretto?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo? Mr. Petrosi?
Yes. Thanks again. We'll take four oh eight, four oh nine together, oh eight is the committee on special ed, along with four oh nine, the report on committee from preschool special ed. Jimmy, second, Rob, questions? Call the roll, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. We're going to take several short term contracts, I'll abbreviate. Uh, we have, under four point one, we have contract number one, Niagara University. Number two, Deborah Hicks. Number three, D N F Travel. Number four, Jenna Hayden Carroll. Uh, number five, U B. Number six, Curriculum Associates. Number seven, Curriculum Associates again. Number eight, Be the Hype of Physical Education. Number nine, Plato Sports Consulting. Number ten, Time to Dance. And number eleven, Bullet Drone. Motion, please. Rob, second, Jim. Questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Billson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsimi? Mr. McLeod?
Yes.
Mr. Peretto?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo? Mr. Petrosi?
Yes. Thank you very much. Four point eleven, head start reports. Tony? Rob? Questions? Quick comment, Lynette, thank you very much, doctor for that, those, the information this, this morning, this, this evening. Really appreciate it, thank you.
Uh, I want to thank our superintendent there in the fourth set, to have her own doctor on staff to, uh, take care of all the bleeds.
Right, yeah, she has no medical training.
Oh.
You're not a nurse, right? No, non-medical, yeah, okay.
Judy, call the roll, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Uh, new business, six oh one to six oh four, we'll take them together. These are acceptance of funds, number six oh one, E S E A Title One. Six oh two, Health Supports Grant. Six oh three, School Board Mental Health Providers Pipeline. Number six oh four, Pedals Grant. Tony? Jimmy on the second? Questions?
May I make a comment?
You sure may.
Just so everyone knows, uh, in addition to that budget presentation we just did, even though that's for next year, these four grants total one million, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars in a separate code. Thanks to the staff for writing, I'm glad we got one point six million dollars more in grants.
Thank you, Mark. Call the roll.
Mr. Billson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsimi?
Yes.
Mr. McLeod?
Yes.
Mr. Peretto?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo? Mr. Petrosi?
Yes. Thank you very much. Six oh five to six oh seven together, oh five is the authorizing our principals to appoint building level school safety team. Six oh six is the approval of appointments of members to the committee on the annual review of the district code of conduct, conduct. And six oh seven is the appointments of members to the district wide school safety team. Rob? Nick, questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Billson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsimi? Mr. McLeod? Mr. Peretto?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo? Mr. Petrosi?
Yes, thank you very much. I will take six oh eight to six point one one together. There are various contracts, oh eight is with Hoagel. Six oh nine is Makita Brooks. Uh, six point one zero is best self behavioral health. Tony, Jimmy, Tony, on the second? Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Billson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsimi? Mr. McLeod? Mr. Peretto?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo? Mr. Petrosi?
Yes. Thank you very much. Six point one one is the appointment of the board of registration. This is due to our, for our budget vote, and our board seats coming up. Was that you, Tony? Tony? Jimmy? Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Billson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsimi? Mr. McLeod? Mr. Peretto?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo? Mr. Petrosi?
Yes, thank you. Just a quick note for our audience here and at home, we've been working on these for the past month, and we're really going through them pretty quick now, but we have spent hours on these items. I don't want anyone to think that we didn't give it the due diligence. Six point one two is a change order for our, our capital projects. Change order num, number, S C C dash oh nine. Nick? Jimmy, second? Questions?
Just a comment, if I may?
Sure.
One of the few change orders, it's a five thousand dollar change order for an unforeseen condition at Seventy-Ninth Street School when they were putting in the secured vestibule. We've had just about one percent change orders on this twenty-nine point three pers, twenty-nine point three million dollar project. One percent by any standard is pretty good. Only one this month, I don't think we have any next month.
Actually, one percent is phenomenal, and also that word unforeseen is not used in this district very often.
No, it isn't.
This one was truly unforeseen.
Yeah, they had a lift, yeah, it was way up in the ceiling of the, of the-
It was covered when it was taken down, they saw.
That's right.
And it was due to a code change.
Correct.
Otherwise, it would have still passed.
It's a code change.
It was a code change, and that happened since it was built.
Right.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Would you call the roll on that one, Judy?
Mr. Billson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsimi? Mr. McLeod? Mr. Peretto?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo? Mr. Petrosi?
Yes. Thank you. Six point one three to six point one seven, I will take together, these are payments. Payment number ten to the Scifari is six point one three. Six one four is payment number ten to Danforth. Six one five is payment number ten again to Danforth. Six one, six point one six is payment number ten to Fry Electric. Six point one seven is payment number ten to Star Tech. Tony? Nick?
Make a comment, please?
You got it.
These contractors, Scifari, Danforth, Fry, Stark, have been outstanding. Uh, they've been cooperative, outstanding, change orders to a minimal, the work is going to get done on time. You see in the budget, there's a number that we're going to get in building aid, and then an offsetting number that we've got to, you know, start paying out that we'll get. And, and the reason they don't match up, one of the big reasons is ninety-eight percent reimbursement. So there's always going to be a slight difference there. Uh, I know the work is being done, and Mr. Marino, who's here, and I appreciate him being here, is just itching to open up that greenhouse at Bond. It's getting close, and I know he's already got a grand opening date, and we got to get the parking spots back. He's itching to get that greenhouse open, it will be coming soon. Uh, but these, these contractors have done a good job. Earl has thoroughly checked on the work, and they deserve the payment.
And they're all local workers.
All local, look at the companies, all local. Scifari, Danforth, Fry, Stark, all in this area. Money's going back to our local contractors.
Thank you for that valid point, important point. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Billson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsimi? Mr. McLeod? Mr. Peretto?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo? Mr. Petrosi?
Yes, thank you very much. Six point one eight is an approval of a property damage claim. Nick? Jimmy? Questions?
Just a comment, this individual is still incarcerated, as he should be. No one should damage anyone's property. I'm glad that he's incarcerated. This is not right. And this teacher deserves her deductible, and that's what's in the contract, and that's what we're paying for, for those that are watching it, so. We, you don't touch people's property, on our school property, or anywhere for that matter. So I just wanted to emphatically make that point. Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Billson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsimi? Mr. McLeod? Mr. Peretto?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo? Mr. Petrosi?
Yes. Thank you. We have one policy to review, and I would recommend we motion to table it.
Yep.
It's seven point oh one, and this is going to be an interesting one, artificial intelligence. Artificial Intelligence.
Mr. Graneri presented that to you last week and I would ask that you table it. Members of the audience that are viewing, those that are here, uh, you can take a look at that policy by seeing our clerk, Ms. Glasser. If you have questions, see it. Questions, call us. I'll probably refer you to Mr. Graneri or Ms. Massaro. But we have got to start looking at policies and protections for artificial intelligence. It's coming. It's not gonna stop. Uh, this policy was given to us by the BOSI's Policy Service. Uh, and again, Maria has checked this over along with Ray. And you're right, Mr. Petrosi, I'd ask to be tabled so that if anyone is listening, anybody's hearing this, anybody in the audience, they wanna see what this policy looks at, looks like, please see the clerk. Uh, we won't be, I won't be asking you to vote on it till next month at the earliest.
Okay. Motion to table? Nick? Jimmy? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Billson.
Yes.
Mr. Kinsimi. Mr. McLeod. Mr. Peretto.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo. Mr. Petrosi.
Yes, thank you. I do not have anyone commenting on non-agenda items. Uh, so that brings up you, Mr. Laurie.
Thank you, I have a lot of comments to share this evening. Uh, so please bear with me and I hope you'll find them informative. I, I wanna thank Men Standing Strong. Uh, thank you for being a good community resource to our kids. I continually would like to reject the notion that there's nothing to do for kids in Niagara Falls. Between the school district and what groups like Men Standing Strong do with their movie nights, their field days, they're always looking to care for kids. And I really appreciate the, the way that they'll voluntarily get out there and take care of kids on a winter Friday night when it's cold, put on a movie and teach kids. The CPR was really cool. That was really cool. And they're trying to do something beyond the movie. And Kevin does a nice job with the dinner, too. So, thank you very much. Uh, interestingly, um, members of the board, next month, at the February meeting, we're going to have two early graduates, Mr. Ventry. Uh, two Janu, we have two January graduates. I believe these are accelerated graduates, um, that are, I know one of them is. They're graduating early and they're starting their college early. So in G, in February, we'd like to present to you two Niagara Falls High School's kids who have completed everything ahead of schedule and they wanna move on to college early. Uh, I'm, I'm, I, so I'm going to recommend a diploma to you in, in February. They've, I know Mr. Ventry would certify her and Ms. Velardo that they've met their requirements. So it's kind of odd, but we're now gonna have a couple of January graduates for a really good reason. So they, they got done early. Um, I wanted to, yep, that is good to clap about. I want to, I want to publicly state this. I've been stating it on my autodiler calls. I wanna thank Ray, Maria, and Becky. Uh, they've been the leads on this. There was a breach of Power School. Power School is our student management system, staff. It wasn't just Niagara Falls. It was 18,000 districts and 6 million students across the United States that had a breach. We, Ray has been tracking this down daily. We, while we feel that some of our data may have been captured, we don't know exactly what that is. And I, I, I'm pleased to say that Ray believes, and it changes by the minute, that not a lot of the parent contact information has been breached. That wasn't part of the breach. You know how we require parents to give a first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth? We don't believe that that was affected. Uh, we, we, we do not use social security numbers in our system, so I wanna make sure and put everybody at rest. Uh, I don't know if it's when you came in, Maria, or, or, and Becky, but we use, we use for teachers and staff, we use a student ID number and we do for students. So I wanna assure the viewing public, the staff, and the parents, because we bought Power School in 2012. That's 12 years of data that could've been breached by some kind of a threat actor. We believe that any of the data that was ascertained and we're not 100% sure what it was, does not include parent contacts, information. Uh, we're hoping that it's internet easy access stuff. You know, stuff that you can get anywhere. And I wanna reassure everyone that we do not use social security numbers, ever. So that was not in question. Now, I'm a little bit, uh, I'm a little bit frustrated by the speed at which Ray's able to get information, but I don't wanna hold back. This happened on December 22nd? This happened on the 22nd. Ray was notified on January 7th. Uh, so we've been, he's been working on it, along with Maria and Becky, every day since then. And I, I'm gonna say this. This is not even our product. Power School is something we buy from BOSI's. It's BOSI's product. It's BOSI's product. But Ray is doing all the work on it. I, I don't agree with that. And I'm saying that for a particular reason. Um, uh, because, um, it's not about the time to talk about cyber insurance, but we've got such an impeccable record to get our cyber insurance. I say that because I don't want our cyber insurance to get mixed up in this. Because Ray insists on everything being clean. This is a BOSI's product. Uh, but we're how, Ray is helping to resolve it. Uh, I'm gonna ask Earl to weigh in. Mr. Peretto, you led a conversation two weeks ago about this. This is with respect to the air conditioning at La Salle and Gaskell. Danforth has done a yeoman's job, yeowoman's job, getting everything in place. You know, we wanna flip the air conditioning so we have it in all buildings on May 1st. Gaskell and La Salle are our ends. When we told you last week, we had, you asked the question, if you remember, and I said we had a call on Friday, if you recall that. Uh, the call was, uh, to a degree, very fruitful, and I'd like Earl to give an update on where we are with National Grid.
Okay, so as recently as yesterday and today, I've been corresponding back and forth and calling back and forth with our account rep at National Grid. Um, they have asked me again for all the easement data that I provided for them for our easements for the new services. Um, I provided them again. Uh, they are telling me now that they, I have handed it over to the Real Property Division for approval. And they asked me when our spring break was because we are adamant that we get this work done over spring break so that we can, as Mr. Laurie said, flip the switch May 1st. Um, I still don't have any great assurances. I still don't even have a price, a formal quote. I just have some of their worksheet numbers on what this may cost us. Um, I, we're working diligently to push them forward on this. And it's been a struggle. I, I have to be honest.
So we made a little progress. We call, we talk every day now. I just, for the listening public, especially for our friends at Gaskell and La Salle, uh, who need, we promised air conditioning, we will call every day. We will force this every day. We want, we will make sure that they deliver. I'm hopeful that, uh, April 12th, they'll start installing the, whatever they install, transformers, and that we'll stick to that timeline. We've told them that not only do we wanna make our schools comfortable, which is a, a big reason we did it, but it also ties back into funding. You know that money, we, we, we have to submit cost reports in a timely way so we can get the reimbursement back. So this is something that's very important, mainly for the kids and the staff, but also for the funding mechanism. So we will stay on them. Uh, we do have a good rep now. We have a, the name of a very good rep there. At least when I respond, Earl and I reach out to her, she responds right away. Now we just need to see a little bit of, of movement. Last thing I'll say, and I don't wanna dig too much deeper into National Grid, we submitted this March...
February of 2023.
February of 2023. It is soon gonna be February of 2025. Yep.
Just imagine if your, just imagine if your bill was that late.
Yeah. Yeah, Earl didn't wanna pay. We're gonna pay, but, uh...
So now, they're examining the easement.
I, I, I can only assume that that is the case.
Wow.
They're examining the easement because we've gotta take some land to put their transformers up, right?
Well, yeah, they have to, we have to give, grant them an easement for their feeder lines and where the transformer that they will own will sit on our properties.
We'll do two things. We'll pledge our continued push and we will pledge our continued honest answers in public to you. That's, that's the best two things I could tell you. We will push every day and we'll tell all of the public where we are. And again, I'm not trying to put National Grid in a bad spot, but in February, it'll be two years. Two years. Moving ahead, I would like to thank 50 teachers, mainly elementary teachers, and I'm not gonna read their names, but 50 of our teachers have signed up for the New York State Science of Reading Conference. And it's a pretty in-depth 45-hour course. 50 teachers signed up. I believe it started already. So, uh, kudos to those teachers and congratulations. Um, uh, the governor this week, I'm gonna ask for everyone's patience on this. The governor, in her address, put in a cellphone ban. I think it's wonderful. Anything that we can do to get cell phones, uh, out of school, bell-to-bell, I think it's wonderful. I think it's wonderful for the mental health of kids. I think it's wonderful for the functioning of schools. The devil will be in the details. As I read the details today, uh, this extends to athletic fields. This extends to sporting events. There's a lot of work that's gotta be done. This is not final. This is in the governor's proposal. Now the legislator will get into it and then we'll get the final regs in the governor's budget. I'm sure it will be in there. It's a great thing. Again, I just wanna be cautious. We'll get parent input because I've received, and I appreciate this, I've received numerous calls and emails about this, both pro and con. Just, I just would ask everyone to just take a deep breath. I will be sure to share information on what the final bill looks like and how we're going to about enforcing it and implementing it in Niagara Falls. It's not due till August, but we're gonna need to have a lot of parent forums on this. It's a good thing. It's a little different than what we're doing now. And again, the nuance of what we're doing is that we're not policing this during athletic events. Whether that stays in the legislation or not, I'm not sure. I, I don't know. And what we're not, we're also, we don't currently have a bell-to-bell, a bell-to-bell, um, a bell-to-bell policy. What do I mean by that? During the lunchrooms, we let kids use their, right? Kids, kids, I'm talking about the high school. Kids can have their phones out in the lunchroom. In this, in the governor's proposal, that's no. When you walk in Niagara Falls High School, when 2,000 kids walk in Niagara Falls High School at 7:45 until they leave at 2:45, no phones. So we got a lot of work to do on that. It's a good thing. It's a good thing, but there's a lot of work. I just would ask people, I got a, I had a wonderful email at about 4:50 today from a parent who said, I think it's great. Uh, I think it's dangerous even during a, God forbid, we have some kind of a problem because their, the phone will ring and somebody will, a nefarious actor will hear it. So I'm getting both, you are never gonna do it. I don't care who you think you are, and I think it's a good thing. So I just, just be patient. We'll, we'll work through it, okay? Um, I'm, I'm really pleased Saturday, to the Budget Saturday, we're hosting 60 school board members and superintendents at Niagara Falls High School. We'll have our legislative breakfast. I'm glad to be hosting it this year at Niagara Falls High School. Um, again, we'll thank the legislators for the foundation aid, ask for more, talk about cell phones. We'll talk about a couple of other things that we think are important in the governor's budget. Uh, that's Saturday. I wanna, I just wanna tell you something. You know, you know about the terrible shutdown of Sumitomo, the plant down in Tonawanda. Uh, I wanna really compliment Maria and Earl and Ray that we've been, we've been talking to some of the employees. And, um, at, on your personnel report in February, we were able to secure a, uh, information specialist person to work in Ray's department that was an IS person for Sumitomo. And, and he lives in Niagara Falls and his wife works for us in the kitchen. And you'll see his name on the next bird personnel report and I think you're really comfortable with him, Ray, to fill in one of your open spots.[1468.41]
Yes, he did a nice job in the interview. He has a, a sound resume.
Yep, so I, I bring that up because I want to be responsive. It's, I feel really, I feel terrible for the people that lost their jobs at Sumitomo. And I think to be able to land at a great place like the school district is a good thing and good for you, Ray, for picking up another, another good worker in IS. He's got a great IS background, so we're happy. Unfortunately, with the weather, the high school has had to do a lot of work. Really credit to the high school administrators. They worked all day Tuesday and all day Wednesday to reschedule the Regents exams for Thursday and Friday. So they, they, they did it. They, they have another day of Regents tomorrow. We're going to be able to administer all of them. We sent our request into the state. They approved it. So we're going to be able to get all Regents exams done. And I love, here's why I love our students. Because I got, they, they're on Teams and even this morning I got up. Why do I have four Teams messages? They, they wanted to tell me they think they need another snow day today. I did respond and say, now I think you've had enough. So go to school and take your Regents exam. But I love our kids because they ask. And the best part of it, I said, they said, when I said, no, go to school, they said, okay. So I, I don't know if they showed up at, but they said, okay. We also had to, we also had to reschedule the odd couple, the high school play. It's going to be the sixth and the eighth of February. It was supposed to be the, today, tomorrow and Saturday. I, I wanted to mention something and, and take this head on. There's been a lot of good work done in the news about the Goodyear Plant that is on Fifty-Sixth Street, right down the way from us. Don't want to shy away from this because people have asked. I, I, I have great concern for our neighbors and residents. We have kids in this area that come to our schools, that go to Cataract and everything. We, we as a district have done a couple of things. We've spoken to the people that are involved in this. We are encouraging Goodyear to, to take care of things for our neighbors and friends. Our schools are not impacted. Earl, for the last several years, and I didn't even know this, and I do want to give him credit, has been checking the filters in the side of our buildings for any type of residue, film, anything that looks untoward in our filters. We've found nothing. We have found nothing. And, and I work here every day and Cataract is there and CEC is there. He has found nothing and he has been steadfast in checking. I do want to support our neighbors and our kids that live in this area and tell you that we also have been in contact with the DEC. I have the regional official's name in Buffalo. I've had two conversations with that individual. Some things he's been able to tell me, some things he hasn't been able to tell me. But I stand in support of the neighbors and our kids and families with this Goodyear situation. It's got to get rectified fast. It doesn't impact our schools. We're safe. Earl will continue to monitor everything, but this is our city. Those are our neighbors, our students and our parents. And I, I just would ask for a quick, very swift, comprehensive remediation. Last two things. Congratulations to Abbott teacher Brittany Cosva. Today she was notified on behalf of Abbott that they got a large grassroots garden. So they're going to be able to add a garden outside of Abbott. And she put that application in and wrote it. And we'll be putting in a nice garden outside of Abbott in addition to that beautiful wall that Yeti Frankel painted with the Heritage Foundation. It's absolutely beautiful. And finally, because we will not be here until the thirteenth, when our next board meeting is, two things I wanted to tell you about. On the tenth of February, it's a Monday. We continue our plan with the North Tonawanda School District and the Niagara Wheatfield School District. You remember how this all started. We continue to meet, we continue to meet with those groups. They are going to bring in the Roving Holocaust Museum to Niagara Wheatfield. And it's an outdoor theater. And our kids are going to meet with antique kids in Niagara Wheatfield kids. They're going to learn about the Holocaust together and civil rights together in this roving museum. So we have not, and I know there were a lot of passionate people here during that unfortunate instance. Three years later, we're still meeting and talking to those groups to make our community relationships better. So I wanted to mention that. And finally, and again, I know we had a resolution that Mr. Kinsimi supported. On February the sixth, the GJ Mann is going to have official dedication of Luke's Lounge. Luke's Lounge is going to be at GJ Mann. It's going to be named for Luke Nichols, a student who passed away from Niagara Falls High School this year. And the G, he went to GJ Mann. And they created, along with some help and furniture, Luke's Lounge. And that's when his parents wanted to come and give thanks to what the board did in GJ Mann. So we're going to, I'll, I'll make sure you all know about this, but they're going to dedicate Luke's Lounge on the sixth of February in, in memory of the, it's some nice furniture where kids can sit around and relax, well done. And we named it after a GJ Mann kid, a student who unfortunately passed away. And I know, speaking of men standing strong, even got involved with that family too. So tragedy, we're trying to keep his great name in memory alive with Luke's Lounge there. Members of the board, thank you very much for the passage of those resolutions. I, I kind of look toward Mr. McLeod only because he's the newest member of the budget. And I want to make sure that everyone understands that the public, he, because it's a big thing. It's one of the biggest things that we do. That is a big budget. That, you, you are responsible for a lot. And I want to make sure that we're always clear, open, transparent and ask all your questions about it. And like I say about the budget, if you have any question, if you think it's going good, tell me. If you have any questions or don't like it, call Becky and Julie. I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Thank you, thank you, board members. We actually kick off this, can you believe this? We have one more week till grades close at the high school. And then we kick off the second semester of this year. I can't believe it. Kick off the second semester. We're moving into week thirty, the twenty-first week. It's hard to believe. Where, we just started. The, 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 the days are long, but the years go fast. So, thank you, board members.
I have a question, Mr. Laurie. What was the attendance rate today at the school for the exams?
Uh, it was, it was about sixty percent, about sixty percent. It was down, Mr. Kinsimi. Here's the, here's the good and the bad. The bad is it was down. The good is that it wasn't the seniors that were down. It was tenth graders who we wanted to come in and get their crack at the exam. That's the bad. The good is that the seniors came because the exams had about thirty, thirty-one seniors who needed those tests to pass. And I'm going to, I talked to Mrs. Villardo and I'm telling Mr., we, we got to get on the phone and use that hour to get those kids in. So it was about sixty percent. The positive was those were the underclassmen. Seniors came through. I was, you know what happened? The, the snow days, a, a kind of a snowy cold morning, it wiped out, it wiped out some kids. So, is that right?
It is, it is right. And all the doctors in June.
Yeah. The, yep, the underclassmen will have that chance in June. But this, it's this, I'm, I'm concerned about everybody. But it's the seniors, the thirty seniors that need one or more of those exams that is our real, you know, the ones that, we want to make sure they have, they're going to pass the first time again, they're going to pass it. But we want to make sure that we give them a safety net of January and June. So the good was that seniors were good, underclassmen not so good. Thanks, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mark. I'll go around the table for board members. I will start with our two on video. How about Mr. Bass? Are you still there? Can you hear me?
Yes, I'm still here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. A little louder, Earl.
Okay. First, I just want to extend my condolences to Ms. Dunn and her family on the passing of her brother. She's in my prayers. He was a great guy. Grew up under him. Very, very talented individual. And just thank you for the information on the budget. It's kind of refreshing to see that it isn't as catastrophic as it normally is around this time of year. And hopefully that stays the case. I know there's some uncertainty ahead on the federal level and even on the state level. But thanks to our, the foresight of Russ and, and those in finance, we've, we've been able to keep ourselves in a, in great condition financially. And everyone have a, a great week. Thank you.
Thanks, Earl. Appreciate it. Mike?
No, thank you. I'm good.
Thanks, Mike. Brad? Thank you, Brad. Nick? Rob?
Condolences to Ms. Dunn on the passing of her brother. And I just want to extend a thank you to the board for the wonderful letter that my family received and for acknowledging the passing of my Uncle Joe at the previous session. So thank you for that.
Jimmy?
Thank you, Doc. Thank you for a very great presentation tonight. That was very informative. And you answered some of my questions on the reason why we have so many people on the waiting list. And I appreciate that. Mr. Petrosi, Mr., I'd like to just make sure that we all know, that Clara knows that we all, all of us feel her loss. Me losing a family member is difficult and especially during the holidays, it's worse. Again, thank you.
Thanks, Jimmy.
Again, I'll reiterate, our financial department, our staff, another great job. And, and still some good hard work to go. And, but we've got some real good numbers to look at and, and we'll make it work. And you guys are like, almost like magical. You got their, you're moving numbers around, you got them here, you guys do a great job. And, you know, it's just amazing stuff. Let's see. You know, the weather, eh, you know, not too good. Go Bills. Hopefully, we will go to the Super Bowl, but we'll see, we'll see.
Tony, I forgot to say that and I have to go back on the mic.
Sorry.
Super Bowl, baby. Go Bills. Go Bills.
Okay, okay.
We all say it and speak it into existence. It's going to happen.
Go Bills. See, we're the voice from beyond. Beautiful. It's almost like Marv Levy speaking. Where else would you rather be? Right here, right now. That's right. What should we tell everybody so they go to school?
I kind of enjoy being on my couch right now with that talking about.
Absolutely, absolutely. But again, yes, again, thank you for all the hard work that our staff does and our teachers and, and our parents to get their kids off to school when the weather is eh, not too good. But again, and Mrs. Dunn, may God bless your family. We are thinking of you. We are praying for you. And, you know, you, it's a hard, it's a hard thing. And, but we're all with you. We've all been through it as board members, sometimes recently. But we're, we're, we're thinking and we're praying for your family. So God bless you.
Thank you, Tony. Mark, is it true if the Bills win the Super Bowl, it's a Bills day?
Here we go. Here we go. The questions are coming in. If the Bills win the Super Bowl, is the next day going to be a snow day? If they win the Super Bowl, we may not have anybody, anybody show up the next day. So we, Mr. Ventry, you might be teaching ten math classes. Mr. Corrello will be here, I'm sure. And so let's say, go Bills and then we'll take it as it comes. We'll take it as it comes. But Russ, I've had that question already asked. We'll take it as it comes. Let's go one, let's take one step at a time, okay? This week will be easy. We'll, we're due, this is it. We got this. The Super Bowl, we got to take, we got to see. Don't worry, we got it. Go ahead, Russ.
Thank you, Mark. Clara, thoughts and prayers with you and your family, for sure. Doctor, thank you for that presentation. Appreciate your time. Saying that, I'm going to adjourn tonight's meeting in the memory of the following. Robert Calati, retired retiree, father of retiree Sharon Calati. Kathleen Fidel, retired pupil service assistant. Joseph Hilty Jr., a retired teacher. Cindy Seuss, sister of Melissa Dasher. Robert Trevano, father of Kathy Urban. Father-in-law of Lynette Trevano. Grandfather of Melissa, Marissa Rogers. And last but not least, Eddie Burnett. Eddie Burnett is Clara Dunn's brother. I'd just like to say I've had the pleasure of knowing Eddie for about twenty-five years. Eddie was the nicest, kindest, most respectful person you ever want to meet. Always with a smile, always a positive thing to say, never a negative thing to say, even when there was plenty to say. He was a wonderful individual and I'm just very gracious and thankful that I had the opportunity to know him for some twenty-five years. Saying that, we are adjourned to tonight's meeting in the memory of all those people that are no longer with us. May I have a motion for adjournment? Nick? Tony? All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody. Thank you for coming and thank you for listening.